Good afternoon, councillors. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. As we do at the beginning of each new session, I remind all councillors of your obligations to declare prescribed and/or declarable conflicts of interests where relevant and the requirement of such to remove yourself from the council chamber for debate and voting where applicable. Apologies, are there any apologies?
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Owen and councillor Atwood will be absent today. I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that councillors Owen and Atwood be granted leaves of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. We do have councillors, two councillors joining us by teams, I believe, if we've overcome some technical issues.
I'm sure there's still some technical issues.
Okay, so we're still overcoming some technical issues to allow councillors Wines and Johnson to join us by teams. Minutes, confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,706th meeting held on Tuesday, the 28th of March 2023, be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,706th meeting of council held on the 28th of March 2023 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees?
Can I just, councillor Johnston, I think is online, it's just...
Yeah, I said that, there's some technical issues they're still trying to resolve, but we're working on it, thank you. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees?
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, ever since the February 2022 flood event, you have pointed out the severe failings of the National Emergency Alert System. Late last year, you updated the chamber that the federal government would be looking to review the system. Can you please update the chamber on the latest news with the alert system?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Landers for that question, because today we heard some very exciting and positive news about a new national emergency alert system being developed. This is a good thing for a country that is prone to natural disasters and for a country that is experiencing more natural disasters, is a good thing in particular for Brisbane, who's had its fair share, or more than its fair share, I would say. This announcement today, though, Mr Chair, is a vindication of what we've been saying since February last year. The National Emergency Alert System is broken, is not fit for purpose and let the people of Queensland down very badly during last year's floods. That system, which was meant to provide quick alerts, to give advance notice of emergency situations, took up to 14 hours from the point that it was first sent to when it reached some residents in Brisbane. That is absolutely unacceptable and that is certainly not an early alert system, that is a late alert system, that is an unacceptable outcome. Now, we've heard Labour at both the state level and at the council level defending the system, because they wanted to play politics with a natural disaster, Mr Chair, and it is about as low as you can go to play politics with a natural disaster. But we know that when we've seen Labour stoop to the lowest levels, they keep going lower. We've seen no depths that they will not plumb when it comes to playing cynical politics. But the federal government knows, the federal Labour government knows that this system needs to be fixed.
That's right.
And this is a positive thing and I welcome this announcement and I thank Minister Murray Watt in particular for rolling up the sleeves and doing what needs to be done. Today, I have volunteered for Brisbane to be a part of the early or the first rollout of this new system. We are now going into a different weather pattern. The last couple of years, we've had a La Nina weather system, we now face a potential El Nino, which is very different to La Nina and more likely for us to see droughts, dry spells and bushfires in the coming summer than it is to experience floods. And so, we know that if this new system is being rolled out and tested, Brisbane should be the first cab off the rank for this system to be tested. So, I were getting in touch with minister Watt to suggest that we start rolling this out in Brisbane first, so that we can have the earliest possible warning system for any future natural disasters. I do commend the federal government for introducing this new system and certainly look forward to working across all three levels of government to make sure that in the case of future disasters, whether it be floods, storms, cyclones or bushfires, that there is immediate notification to the people of Brisbane, not in 14 hours, not hours later, but immediate notification. This new system appears to be offering that solution and it is something that I warmly welcome.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Finance and City Governance Committee, councillor Cunningham. Councillor Cunningham, you would be aware that residents have seen their rates more than double while the LNP has been in power here in Brisbane City Council. Households across the city are struggling with the cost of living pressures and surely would welcome some relief with their ever increasing rates bill. Councillor Cunningham, can you confirm the reason you won't announce a freeze on rates this year to ease the cost of living pressures residents are facing is because the budget has blown out by billions of dollars on inner city projects?
Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I thank the opposition leader for the question. Well, I won't be confirming anything today, Mr Chair, because the opposition leader knows he must wait until the budget is handed down. What I can confirm, though, for the record, is that we won't be raising rates by more than 6%, like the ALP did last time they were in control of this place, and rates will always be lower under an LNP administration, Mr Chair. Residents know this, residents know this, and that's why they trust the LNP to run Brisbane City Council. Brisbane has the cheapest residential rates in South East Queensland, and that is a record that we are proud of on this side of the chamber. Brisbane is a great place to live and we want to do everything we can to reduce the pressure on households. It's only through careful financial management, Mr Chair, that we can keep our rates low, the lowest in South East Queensland. As I've said, we continue to maintain it.
Councillor Cassidy, please.
In 2022-23, the minimum owner occupier rates in Brisbane is $818.84. This is $325 less than the minimum general rates on the Gold Coast. Labour failed to mention that Brisbane's inflation is around 7% and the increase in the last financial year was well below that. It's because we continue to manage our expenses, Mr Chair. So even when the cost of bitumen, the cost of sand, as we heard in committee, the cost of sand, the cost of concrete, as we heard in committee this morning, from our financial experts in council continues to rise, council is managing the finances for Brisbane residents. The increase in minimum rates on the Gold Coast last year was $96. In Moreton Bay, it was $68. In Logan, 74. On the Sunshine Coast, it was $83. And in Redlands, it was $87. In Brisbane, it was just $59.76. And of course, our rates are also cheaper to begin with. Residents know that in Brisbane, they get more and they pay less. And while providing cheaper rates, we know that residents are highly satisfied by the services and the infrastructure that this council provides. The people of Brisbane know that under an LNP administration, they pay less and they get more. And, Mr Chair, rates will always be lower under an LNP administration.
Further questions? Councillor Adaman.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. The Shrima Council's upgrade of Mogal Road is making significant progress with more milestones being met. Can you please update the chamber on the latest in this congestion busting road project?
Councillor Wines, can you hear us?
Councillor Adaman for his question and his ongoing interest in this particular project. The Mogal Road construction project continues apace and I just want to make mention of something I read in newspapers over the weekend, that there was some concern from the federal government that they would no longer be supporting urban congestion fund projects and that federal funding for transport projects would be reduced potentially, and can I say that that is the wrong direction and that projects such as this are a great example of why it's really important to use local governments like Brisbane to deliver important infrastructure benefits, not just the local area but the general area of the western suburbs. Brisbane City is a leading partner and has an excellent reputation for being able to deliver these projects. I appreciate some southern councils have struggled, but we have not, and this project is a great example of that. So, we often talk about this project, but the proposal is starting to take shape. The project, you can see leaving the ground for the bridge element, you can also see the service road construction, and as councillors should know by now, we're actually raising some of the roads there. So, that project, that component of the project has in many ways begun. But the milestones that councillor Adaman referred to also refer to a range of works that you can't see, and that's one of the problems with a lot of these big infrastructure projects. As you well know, Mr Chair, a lot of the problems are underground and a lot of the problems are not seen. So, when we're doing work here, we have to in many ways upgrade the sewerage, the water, the communication, the drainage, and sometimes we have to work with the electricity as well. So, that's just some of the services underground that have to be improved as part of this. And can I just touch on some of those sorts of things? So, as part of this project, council has been part of, in cooperation with some of our partners, to lay 3.5 kilometres of new communication cable, 2.5 kilometres of new drainage pipe, which I must mention is significantly larger than the existing drainway, and I think it's also important to mention that the drainage corridor actually comes off that hill off Stanley Terrace, sort of runs down past the old BP, if people know it there, and then into the river through that corridor, and to some extent Coonan Street. So through there, that whole drainage line is going to be upgraded, and that's one of the reasons why Coonan Street has been one lane for so long is because of the significant upgrade to drainage for the people of Indrapilly. And I think people can see that. It's also important to mention that we actually have a very large, months and months in advance stockpile of drains to make sure that the drainage work will not be slowed by a shortage of drainpipe. So we are making sure that that particular element is addressed properly. There's been a kilometre of new sewer pipe, three kilometres of new water pipe, two kilometres of new electricity cabling and an improvement of 2.2 kilometres of intelligent traffic systems networks. And this is the work that you cannot see, and I know that I and a number of councillors had an opportunity to go and have a look at some of this stuff, and it is quite significant and quite impressive. Can I recognise the efforts of our team who've worked so hard with people like Telstra and Urban Utilities and EJX to be able to work on this, to hit some of those timeframes we need to be able to deliver this in the time that we expect? They're not always the easiest of partners to work with, so I just wanted to recognise that. In the very near future, we will be starting...
Are you raising a point of order, councillor Johnston?
...to build the retaining wall on Mogal Road, what I call Mogal Road East or Mogal Road North, and that will involve, because of the retaining wall construction and the expansion of the lanes through Mogal Road North, the proponent between, I suppose you call it, the old Audi dealership in Rockabye Street, that will require a lane to work with, and that will mean that a lot of traffic will be required to use the old service road, which I know a lot of people have seen, but many people would have rarely used. We've been working on upgrading that to make sure that it's ready for an increased volume of traffic. We've been working with transport planning officers inside TPO, we've been working with our city projects office to make sure that it's well signed and well prepared. We've been working with communications groups to make sure that this particular change...
Thank you, councillor Wines. Your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Johnston. Councillor Johnston, you have your call.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. Sorry, there's been some IT problems, just want to make sure you can hear me.
We can.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, there is grass growing up through Oxley Road in multiple areas. There are major potholes, subsidencees and sunken patches, and it's flooded twice. It's in a shocking state, so why hasn't council resurfaced Oxley Road?
Lord Mayor.
Well, that's a question that obviously is under consideration in the budget. We have a proud record of doing more resurfacing than any other administration in the city's history, and in fact, this year, we've funded more road resurfacing than any single year in Brisbane's history. This year. And so, not only have we done our regular ongoing resurfacing, there's also been additional funding put aside to make sure that we deal with roads that have been flooded in the 2022 floods last year. Councillor Wines has previously talked about...
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Yes, Mr Chairman, my question is about Oxley Road. It's not about every other road in Brisbane, and council's refused to resurface it as part of flood recovery. So why is grass growing up through Oxley Road and council taking no action? So, the Lord Mayor might be taking action on other roads, but my question is specifically about Oxley Road.
Thank you. The Lord Mayor has been relevant to the question.
Mr Chair, if you listen to the language here, councillor Johnston has inaccurately said that council has refused to resurface the road. That is not the case at all. That is simply not the case and is misrepresenting the facts in this matter. So, we have an ongoing programme of identifying the highest priority roads to make sure they are resurfaced, and we've provided increasing levels of funding to do this. Councillor Wines has previously highlighted and outlined the process for monitoring...
But why is Oxley Road being neglected?
Councillor Johnston, please.
For monitoring roads that were flooded in last year's floods, and there's been extensive surveys done of every road that was flooded to determine how it has fared from the flood damage and what sections require the highest priority resurfacing, and that work is ongoing. And in some cases, as councillor Wines has pointed out, the damage is not immediately apparent and comes to the fore even months and months after the flooding occurred. And so we're continuing to monitor and prioritise...
But you can see the damage on Oxley Road right now, so why isn't it being resurfaced? There's grass growing up...
Councillor Johnston, please, cease interjecting.
Mr Chair, we know that councillor Johnston is the chief legal officer of council or the wannabe CEO of council, and now she's the chief engineer of council apparently, and knows better than our engineers what should be resurfaced and what should not be resurfaced. She knows better than the laser monitoring that has been done across every single road, and this is the sort of thing that we see from councillor Johnston all the time, Mr Chair, where she claims to know better than the professional council officers who make recommendations on these things. Well, I will believe the council officers' recommendations over councillor Johnston any day of the week. So we will continue to invest in resurfacing roads, we'll continue to fund resurfacing roads at record levels, and we'll continue to do the work that is the highest priority first.
Further questions? Councillor Mackay.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, last week, the Shrima Council successfully released more koalas into our natural environment. Can you please update the chamber on this achievement, including what the Shrima Council is doing to make Brisbane the koala capital of Australia?
Thank you. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, I'd like to thank councillor Mackay for the question, because I know that councillor Mackay is passionate about the protection of our koala population and has taken a very keen interest in the important work undertaken in collaboration with the University of Queensland, which of course has a campus in the Walter Taylor Ward. Mr Chair, as part of our mission to make sure that Brisbane is the koala capital of Australia, we're investing in strategies like the Koala Research Partnerships Programme, where we partner with leading koala experts at the University of Queensland, the University of the Sunshine Coast and Federation University Australia. And this approach was identified as the very best way to facilitate research work and form meaningful partnerships with the university, so that we could form a hub of experts that we could tap into, where we could address current knowledge gaps and of course guide the scope of the research and ensure that it was translatable to practical management outcomes. Probably the most important outcome of the research was for the programme not just to deliver research for research sake. Importantly, the research work being funded by council must contribute to addressing at least one of the key threats to koalas across Brisbane. And so we're working with the Federation University of Australia to analyse the DNA of koalas from their scats using a new and improved laboratory technique, and this will ensure that we have a consistent approach to koala DNA analysis in Brisbane and other parts of South East Queensland. The second project is with the University of the Sunshine Coast, who are working to better understand the genetic profiles that are less susceptible to disease, and this links well with the work done at Federation University. Thirdly, we're working with the University of Queensland to address the threat posed by chlamydia to koala populations in Brisbane, and the team at UQ are working on a koala probiotic that will not only improve the recovery of chlamydia infected koalas but also help improve the future resilience of koalas to the disease. The results from this work have been incredibly positive. At Belmont Hills Reserve, we have greatly improved the health of the koalas there from a 75% infection rate to the disease now being virtually eliminated in that area. So as part of the programme, we surveyed bushland across the city with specially trained protection dogs, including at Pooh Corner, which was surveyed for koalas using, as I said, specially trained koala detection dogs. The surveys provided a great deal of information about the distribution health and the genetic diversity of the koalas across Brisbane, and through this work, it was found that despite providing ideal habitat, no koalas were found in Pooh Corner or Waycol Bushland Reserve, which were acquired by council through the Bushland Acquisition Programme between 2006 and 2008. So in what is considered a world first, we are reintroducing koalas into this area, and I'm pleased to inform the chamber that it is going extremely well. Mr Chair, you will recall that last year, I was very excited to share with the chamber that we had released a number of koalas into the Pooh Corner Bushland Reserve at Waycol, and other than the Lord Mayor, there was no one more excited than councillor Hutton. And, Mr Chair, I'm excited to confirm that two more koalas named Chandler and Heaven have now found a new home at Pooh Corner. I'm told that the release went very, very well, and it looks like they are already settling into their new environment. Chandler and Heaven now join Matilda, Carrie and Lady Jane, and Lady Jane's baby Joey, who was born after their release last year. All of the koalas released under this project had become displaced and couldn't be returned to where they were originally found. But I have even more good news, Mr Chair. In the next fortnight, we'll be planning to release another koala in Pooh Corner. Her name is Atty, and she would have been released with Chandler and Heaven, but she was happy staying where she was at the Mogal Rehabilitation Centre and proved a little elusive to catch when she was due to be released. As I said before, the translocation of koalas is but one element of the critical work being done across the Koala Research Partnerships Programme, but it is one of the most ambitious and most promising koala conservation projects that we've ever seen in Brisbane. Overall, council has invested more than $1.2 million in this crucial programme. It's a bold project that is likely a first for the urban area of Brisbane.
Thank you. Councillor Davis, your time has expired. Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, we know that your LNP administration doesn't care for or value our workers. You have prioritised profits by outsourcing and increasing the casualisation of council's workforce. Lord Mayor, how many apprenticeships and traineeships in Brisbane City Council have been scrapped under your LNP administration through two decades of outsourcing?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Obviously councillor Cassidy's all fired up after his Labour Day march yesterday, and he's had, you know, more meetings, not with residents but with union officials, but there was something interesting that he mentioned in his question, or so-called question. He said prioritising profits. I'll give you a big tip, councillor Cassidy, council doesn't make profits. Yes, we have a balanced budget, but everything that is made is either saved by ratepayers or reinvested for the benefit of ratepayers. We don't make profits, we're not a business, we are a service provision organisation.
Councillor Cassidy. Councillor Cassidy.
And that is what we continue to do. Now, we have an ongoing series of programmes, including apprenticeships, which we continue to support, and we will continue to grow these to make sure that our organisation continues to support apprentices but also gearing up our future workforce as well. And we know that there are some fantastic apprentices coming through. It's always one of my great pleasures to attend the Apprentice of the Year awards each year in council and to see the fantastic new talented workers that are coming on board and doing apprentices in the city of Brisbane. So these employment programmes, we continue to support, and councillor Cassidy's question was very strange, because we're not making profits, we are not a business, we are a service organisation, that is what we are absolutely committed to doing. We're committed to improving services, we're committed to investing in our workforce, we're committed to ensuring that our workforce is paid fairly as well, and we've continued to make sure we've done that, and councillor Cassidy would be aware that we moved proactively last year to deliver a fair pay increase for council workers right across the board, and that increase also made sure that the lowest paid workers in council got more. They got the highest increase out of anyone in the organisation, the lowest paid workers got more, and that is a positive thing. And it wasn't any thanks to the unions, because guess what? The unions still haven't decided what they want out of the EVA process and are still bickering. So they've made themselves completely irrelevant to the workers of this organisation, and it was actually this LNP administration who delivered a pay increase. We didn't wait for the unions, the unions are bickering, the unions are holding up the process, we delivered the pay increase, and we made sure that lowest paid workers got the biggest increase. So our record when it comes to supporting the workers of this organisation is second to none, and that's why people love working for Brisbane City Council. They find their passion in the job, they know that they're making a difference for the people of Brisbane, they know that they are part of high quality service provision...
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, the question's pretty simple. How many apprenticeships and traineeships have been scrapped under this LNP administration's 20 years in office through their continued contracting out?
Thank you, councillor Cassidy, it's not an opportunity to re-prosecute the question, you've taken your point of order. The Lord Mayor has been relevant to the question, which is about apprenticeships in working in Brisbane City Council.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'm not aware of any. I'm not aware of one single. In fact, I'm only aware of the new apprentices that we keep bringing on each year.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, last week you launched Brisbane's Inner City Strategy, a key document designed to make sure Brisbane is prepared for the Brisbane 2032 Games. Can you please update the chamber on some of the key outcomes from this document?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, thank you councillor Hutton. Very excited to talk about Brisbane's Inner City Strategy. It's a very important planning strategy, a very important part of the city, and as a subset of our...
And as a subset of our Sustainable Growth Strategy, it is looking at the ways that we can make sure that we keep Brisbane as livable as possible for the 10 years to the Olympics and the 10 years beyond that as well. The best cities in the world aren't created by chance. And when it comes to planning for the future of our city, we don't just talk about it, we get on with the job and deliver. So as I said, we're looking forward to 2032, but we're also looking past 2032. So we've got sustainable, long-term outcomes that will benefit Brisbane for generations to come. We have a strong pipeline of infrastructure investment, hopefully after the Albanese government's announcements yesterday, and a myriad of major city shaping projects underway. And we are destined just to grow and we need to manage that growth. We need to make sure that we meet our full potential, that we're prepared for it and that we have a clear plan to make sure we have enough housing. But we also have the sports infrastructure we need for the Olympics and the transport, the connectivity and the cultural things that we love so much about our inner-city 5K as well. We are a strategically important part of the city, the inner 5Ks of the city. It is the economic engine room for the city. By 2041, it will be home to over 1 million workers and residents, making it one of Queensland's most significant growth areas. And it is a place where people and ideas exist together. It is literally a cultural melting pot. Pot, industry, knowledge, innovation, all of those power the enterprise that is becoming Brisbane as well. It's a big part of our identity as a city. And by 2032, we'll be on show to the eyes of the world and beaming out to over 5 billion viewers. So this city strategy is, inner-city strategy, is a necessary step in our pathway to our success. As I said, following the release of Brisbane Sustainable Growth Strategy in March, this builds on the strategic direction of that plan to identify how our inner-city precincts can continue to grow sustainably over the years and unlock new opportunities for housing, employment and green space. The Lord Mayor recently announced plans to guide growth in the Karilpa Precinct. It is transit-rich, it is on the doorstep of South Bank and the CBD. And this precinct is one of the best-located sustainable growth precincts in the city. This will be the first precinct planned delivered under the strategy, followed by Albion, Newstead, as well as a master plan for the city centre as well. Underpinning the strategy's future directions are four pillars that are the basis for future priority projects and initiatives that will be rolled out over the coming years. The first, Brisbane's subtropical lifestyle. Our outdoor lifestyle is the essence of our city and just as much in the inner-city as it is in the suburbs as well. It is one of our greatest competitive advantages and assets. At its core, it seeks to achieve a network of green and blue infrastructure that connects and beautifies our inner-city precincts while providing space for people to socialise and connect with nature. Secondly, curating cultural experiences. Obviously, we know that the cultural centre of Queensland is in the inner-city. And we're fortunate to have some of the best cultural facilities and entertainment precincts concentrated around that inner 5K. From the Gabba through to West End, South Bank, Howes Smith Walls, Fortitude Valley, the powerhouse. We have got our premier live music district in the Fortitude Valley. All of that arts, culture, events, tourism will help create the 24-hour city that I know one day we will get to. And it's one thing that we must absolutely focus on for 2032 as well. A culturally diverse and mature inner-city celebrates our First Nations and our multicultural communities and recognises the value that arts bring to Brisbane and the experiences here as well. The third pillar is connecting places and transport. Making sure that our transport networks are the connecting fibres of our inner-city and we move towards the inner-city, the objective of becoming a transit-oriented community where public and active transport journeys are prioritised. An integrated public and active transport network will open more of the inner-city for discovery and as a precursor to realising a truly inclusive city. The fourth pillar is creating inner-city neighbourhoods. Our inner-city is actually a mosaic of many different neighbourhoods, each with their own very unique character and qualities. The renewal of the inner-city really does give that opportunity to contain the best of what we see in the South Brisbane Karilpa Precinct, which will be different to the best of what we see in Albion and Newstead and so on. It will take the best of our urban renewal learnings that we have learnt over the years to create sustainable inner-city neighbourhoods with high-quality housing, accessible green space, innovative businesses and employment opportunities for all. Brisbane just keeps getting brighter and I'm very proud of the ways the city is evolving and how we are making sure we have positive benefit changes for our residents.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks Chair, my question is to the Chair for the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, two months ago I asked you what new initiatives your LMP council had begun as part of the so-called Housing and Homelessness Strategy. You couldn't name a single one then. So two months on with the housing and homelessness crisis deepening, can you detail new initiatives now that your LMP council is funding or is the answer still zero?
Councillor Howard?
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, I thank the leader of the opposition for his question. And particularly given that we will be debating a motion very shortly in this chamber about housing and homelessness. It is something, of course, that I can assure this chamber that this council continues to undertake a significant amount of work each and every day to support those at risk or experiencing homelessness. And of course, we formalise this support through our Sustainable Growth Strategy. And while this council will continue to provide support via a number of mechanisms, such as the great work of our PSLOs, the Community Housing Partnership Programme and investment into organisations like Brisbane Housing Company, we are continuing this support through new and innovative programmes, such as Pathways Out of Homelessness programmes. So we've mentioned in this chamber previously that we believe direct action to support those at risk or experiencing homelessness should be council's priority in this space. And while a significant amount of work has already been undertaken with regard to the development of a strategy to further assist those at risk of experiencing homelessness, I think it's very worthwhile highlighting that this month council will be announcing the successful recipients of the Pathways Out of Homelessness Programme. And this programme has been providing new and innovative solutions to assist those at risk or experiencing homelessness and has provided support to over 3,700 since its inception in 2019. We know that the Queensland State Government's unfortunate lack of investment in this space has impacted our cities most vulnerable. But this council will continue to do what it can with the resources that we have to support those who need it. We encourage the Queensland Australian governments to increase the supply of social and affordable housing to further support those in our community.
Point of order to you councillor Cassidy?
My question was specifically about new initiatives that this LMP council is undertaking. Councillor Howard continues to outline old initiatives that were in place in the lead-up to a housing and homelessness crisis that we're now facing. But my question is about what new initiatives? It's been two months since I last asked this, Chair.
Thank you, I believe the Chair has been relevant to the question. It's talking about existing programmes that are ongoing.
Well, sorry, point of order Chair, you just made my point. You just said that the Chair is talking about existing.
Which are ongoing.
And my...
Which are ongoing.
But they're not new Chair, my question is about new...
Sorry councillor Cassidy, I'll rule on your point of order. The Chair has been relevant to the question.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair. And the things that I've already talked about are hugely important. This crisis is across Australia. It's not just here in Queensland or in Brisbane, it's across Australia. But we know that Brisbane particularly is suffering the most at the moment. And one of the things that we...
Councillor Cassidy, please, cease interjecting.
So through you, Mr Chair, the important aspect of this is to note, who is responsible? Who? The state government, the state government. And what do we do? We support the state government in the actions that they are taking. Through you, Mr Chair, we are yet to hear from the opposition what they'd like to do. Nothing, it's just barbs thrown at everyone. All I can say to you is that this council and the officers within my portfolio speak daily, speak daily to those at the state. And I'm pleased to say that the state government is working very cooperatively with the levers that we have to pull. We don't have the levers to build new houses, that's the job of the state government. What I can tell you is that the number of people sleeping rough or in their cars right now, including young people and children, is truly heartbreaking. I can tell you that. Council's dedicated public space officers really work really hard with the homelessness people and the assistance and services that they need. And they have a history of achieving great outcomes. However, the situation right now is nothing short of a crisis. So our officers are being regularly told by the incredible people who operate community support organisations that there's simply no place to put people. It's a full house. And the facility, one of the facilities that we'll be talking about later in the chamber is certainly one option. We've produced a strategy that provides other options. But this is something that needs to be supported not just by this council but by state and federal governments. This is a crisis that all levels of government need to be participating in.
Thank you. Councillor Howard, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Toomey?
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the City Standards Committee, councillor Marks. Councillor Marks, the Shrinna Council has a strong track record of keeping Brisbane clean, green and sustainable. Can you please update the chamber on how we are educating Brisbane's youngest residents on how they can be waste smart?
Councillor Marks?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. And through you, I thank councillor Toomey for the question. So this administration is committed to creating a clean and green Brisbane and we are fortunate to represent the dedicated residents of the city who are passionate about protecting and enhancing the beautiful enjoyment, environment we enjoy here in Brisbane. Council's free school and kindergarten programmes are a great way to provide innovative opportunities for our city's young residents to learn more about sustainability and how to keep us on the right track as a clean, green, sustainable city. Educating the children in our area on the best ways to reuse, reduce and recycle waste is vital. And that's why I'm proud to be part of the Shrinna Council, Mr Chair, because under the leadership of Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna, we've delivered many of the waste fighting programmes that have saved thousands of tonnes of waste from landfill. One of our most popular programmes is the Waste Smart Kindy Programme, which is designed to teach Brisbane's youngest residents how to be waste smart while providing suggestions to help kindergarten centres become more sustainable. I'm proud to inform the chamber that we have reached a significant Waste Smart Kindy Programme milestone. We now have 25 early learning centres that are Waste Smart Kindy accredited. We also have over 1,700 educators who have completed the online training. So this programme continues to go from strength to strength, Mr Chair. Recently, I actually visited one of these Waste Smart Kindies in my own ward, the Avonews Childcare Centre at their awards ceremony and saw First Town, the great work that these people are doing in this place. In fact, one of the teachers there who was doing the Waste Smart Kindy online training and was helping with the children is actually one of the educators that was looking after one of my... Both my kids, when they were going through preschool, so she didn't look a day older than she had all those years ago. But obviously, not everyone ages with working with children, because she's doing a fabulous job. They, and it's quite surprising just what some of these Kindies are doing. In fact, I visited another one the other day. And the thing that kids were talking about was, when I talked to them about the issues with rubbish is the ocean. They were very concerned about all the rubbish going into the ocean and how it was affecting our ocean life and the seals and the jellyfish and the shark, all the fish. Turtles, turtles was a big one, yes. I said, yeah, plastic bags particularly, turtles think they look jellyfish and eat them, which is very, very bad for them. But another initiative that I highly recommend for school ages is a trip towards Zero Waste Education Centre at the Brisbane landfill site. So a visit to the centre involves a presentation to students on waste minimisation at landfill operations. That takes approximately half an hour and then you get in and do a landfill tour around the site, which takes another half an hour. So that centre aims to develop awareness of waste as an issue for sustainability and it highlights the problems of consumption and disposal practices. Mr Chair, every year 27,000 tonnes of paper and cardboard end up in Brisbane landfill simply because it's placed in the wrong bin. General waste bins in Brisbane schools contain about 19% paper and paper-related products, which is a waste of a reusable resource. So we recently launched the Waste Smart Games in partnership with VIZI, which is the paper-cardboard recycling competition for schools across Brisbane, encouraging the next generation to get creative or discovering more ways to reduce, reuse and recycle. I'm pleased to inform the chamber that these Smart Games is back and expressions of interest are open on the council website for schools interested in joining the 2023 Waste Smart Games and the possibility of winning prizes worth over $4,500. From memory, I think councillor Adams and councillor Toomey, their schools picked up the sweeps last year's awards. So people have got some work to do if they want to try and beat those two dedicated councils in that space. To conclude, all residents are encouraged to get out and access our programmes for students or your children. There are many exciting things to learn in this place and I commend all the officers in delivering the programmes. Only the Shrinna administration can be trusted to ensure the Brisbane of tomorrow is even better than the Brisbane of today. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends question time for today. Lord Mayor?
Point of order, Mr Chair, in line with section 11, subsection 2A of the meeting's local law, I move that we now bring forward the notice of motion on today's agenda for debate right now.
Okay, so that's bringing forward the consideration of notified motion that says item eight on the agenda to, for debate now, is that correct? Yes. Okay, there's no vote required, you can go straight to it.
Okay. And Mr Chair, I move that this council is deeply concerned about the potential closure of both the Big Bird Backpackers in the city and the Clivedon Mansions in Spring Hill, which will force up to 110 people out of housing with no other options for accommodation. Meanwhile, the Pinkham Bar Quarantine Facility has 500 empty beds that could be accessed by vulnerable people right now. This administration first called for the quarantine facility to be repurposed on the 26th of July last year, some 277 days ago. This council calls on, again on the Queensland and federal governments to immediately make use of this facility and we stand ready and willing to provide public services to the site, including transport and a mobile library.
Seconded.
Seconded, thank you. Can I take the motion as read by the Lord Mayor? Lord Mayor, any debate?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Now, we know that one of the most critical issues right now in our community is the provision of housing. And it's been positive to see all three levels of government, the community housing sector, the construction industry, all coming together as part of both housing roundtables and housing summits in recent times. And I want to thank the state government for convening those summits and getting all three levels of government and the community and business together to talk about solutions. Now, many of those solutions, Mr Chair, involve changes that will take time to play out. Now, if someone has an approval to build today, to build new homes for people, it's going to take 18 months to two years, optimistically, for that to be finished and to be in a place where people can move in. That is the reality of the time it takes to build things. And we know that right now is a challenging time to build anything. And so while these changes that are in the medium term are welcome and are positive, they're not going to create an immediate impact. They're not going to immediately provide roofs over people's heads. And that's why this issue that we put forward is really important right now. Because right now, tonight, residents of Brisbane are witnessing a level of homelessness that we have not seen in a very long time. And certainly not something that I've witnessed in my time as a Brisbane resident. Seeing people living in cars, sleeping in tents, seeing people sleeping rough. The people who are homeless right now are people who, in many cases, are just ordinary Brisbane residents and have fallen on difficult times. Circumstances have conspired to see them without a roof under their head, over their head. And this is something that requires action, not only in the medium term and the long term, but right now. Now, I was heartened to see out of the Housing Roundtable and Summit last year that one of the options put on the table was to use an unused or under-utilised facility at Griffith University to provide crisis accommodation. Now, that was something that was welcome because it could be activated relatively quickly. The demand and the need is now and these short-term solutions are really important right now. We have since heard that the state government has decided not to proceed with that Griffith University option and instead they've decided to buy a number of houses on the private sector. If you look at the list of where those houses are being purchased, the vast majority are outside of Brisbane. Now, being the capital city of the state also means that there are problems and challenges... that there are problems and challenges in terms of homelessness, which also come from other areas to Brisbane. There are people who have come here and are homeless in Brisbane from, have come from other parts of Queensland and other parts of Australia. And challenges are often concentrated in the heart of capital cities. And we see that as a global phenomenon. People often move from regional areas into the city hoping to find a home. And that's what's happened in recent times and they have not been able to find anything. So in terms of the state government's prioritisation of homes outside of Brisbane, we have a challenge right now in Brisbane and it's never been greater that I've seen. And here is an opportunity to do something practical. The facility has been built and paid for. It is government owned. The federal government has previously, previously said that they are open to it being used for another purpose other than quarantine. They have said that it will be reserved for emergency situations. We have a housing emergency right now. There is a need right now and there are roofs that could be put over people's head. Now, I know that there are people that have argued that this is not what the facility was designed for and indeed that is correct. It was not designed for this, it was designed for the pandemic. But we need to think outside the box because cars were not designed to be slept in. Parks were not designed to be homes for people's tents. People were not designed to be sleeping rough. And so we need to be creative. At the most recent housing summit, which I attended, I talked to one of the charity providers there, a well-known charitable organisation who came up to me afterwards and said, when you first proposed the Pinkham Bar Quarantine Facility, I was not in favour of that. I could foresee there were some challenges there. This person then said, as time has passed, I now think we have to have a look at this. And so someone who was against the idea to start with, someone who has real experience providing crisis accommodation for people, their mind has been changed because they know that we need solutions right now. And so let's use this investment from the federal government. Let's activate this facility. Let's get roofs over people's heads as soon as possible. Now, I know this might not be suitable for the particularly high risk or high needs people that need a plethora of support services around them. But what about those people that need little support that are homeless right now? There are people who are saying, look, I, I don't need, I don't need a great deal of social services. I just need a roof over the head of myself and my kids. I don't care where it is, I just need a roof. I need to be safe and secure when I go to bed each night. And at the moment, I'm doing that in a car. I don't need anything from the government, I just need a roof. And there are 500 beds available right now. And at the moment, the only residents in the quarantine facilities are insects and spiders. When we went there, councillor Howard, there were spider webs, cobwebs everywhere. But it was a brand new facility that can quickly, can quickly be activated to provide roofs for those people who are in need. Now, it's been interesting, Mr Chair, to see the response from different people about this. Some people have come up with practical reasons, you know, why this might not be the perfect facility. And I agree, it's not perfect, but it is certainly better than sleeping in cars and tents. Some people have said, oh, it's not in the right location. Well, people are sleeping in tents and cars all over Brisbane right now. And they would be prepared to go anywhere that gave them a secure roof over their heads. Council obviously stands ready to support, as this motion says, with the provision of public transport services. And whether it's a regular bus service or whether it's the activation of our council cabs programme, I think that could work. We already run a programme in many parts of the city where we provide very cheap cab fares to the local shops, to the doctors, so that people can get access to them. This facility could be activated as part of that programme. We could send the mobile library around there to provide some library services as well. We stand ready to work with the other levels of government to provide practical solutions. I certainly hope that we can get unanimous bipartisan support for this motion. The time is now to act. The opposition continue to call for action on housing. Well, here is something that they can do. Here is something that they can do that within a matter of weeks can provide secure accommodation for people. Not things that might take 18 months or two years or three years. Within weeks, we can have roofs over people's heads. Let's come together in a bipartisan way. Let's support this motion and let's get safe, secure accommodation for 500 people.
Thank you. Further debate? Further debate, councillor Cassidy?
Yeah, sure. Thanks very much, I rise to speak on this motion today. And I think the Lord Mayor is a little delusional about what a motion in council will achieve in that he thinks if this passes today, that tomorrow this facility will be opened up. And what's in the motion before us today and the fact that we're back here today, six weeks after our last council meeting, a long recess break in which the Lord Mayor did all of the business of council with his civic cabinet over that period as delegated from council. And still we just have one idea from the Lord Mayor. It's just, just the one idea. It is an idea and I, I do accept what he says, that when you are faced with the prospect of having to sleep under a bridge in a tent, in a park, in the backseat of a car with your family, this facility does look a lot better than that. Granted, I accept that and we agree with that. But it's been 277 days since the Lord Mayor came up with his first idea and it's still his only idea. Last six weeks, we've had-
Point of order to you, Lord Mayor.
Point of order. Claim to be misrepresented.
Last six weeks, we've had this long recess that the ANC does all this work and, and they brought, they brought one thing to council today, Chair. A fancy restaurant. That's the one thing they brought. So they brought a notice of motion, of course, which was the idea from 277 days ago and a fancy restaurant on the Kangaroo Point Bridge today. So we've had that long recess, we've had 277 days for Lord Mayor to come up with some actions. We've had, you know, councillor Howard had two months to come up with some new initiatives to go alongside the new home, the so-called homelessness strategy that council has and confirmed again today that all this council is putting on the table, all the LMP is putting on the table is everything they've done in the lead up to this crisis, the exact same amount of money, the exact same amount of staff, the exact same programmes and hopes for a different outcome. That's where we're at. That's the kind of leadership we've got here in Brisbane under the LMP, under Adrian Shrinna. He comes in and throws a grenade every now and again, every, every couple of weeks, every six weeks or so and says the state government and the federal government should do more. The state government and federal government should do new things. But apparently, his LMP administration, which is confirmed by him and confirmed by his relevant chair councillor Howard, whose ward is the epicentre of this housing and homelessness crisis on the streets of Brisbane, says they don't need to do anything new because it's somebody else's problem. That's what the LMP says. They ask everyone else to do the heavy lifting. The homelessness strategy, I suppose, is the only new thing that this LMP administration has brought in in the last year. And that was as a result of a Labour motion in this council that council establishes a homelessness strategy. We thought you might have put something in it instead of just saying, over the last decade, here are some of the programmes that council rolled out and they haven't been able to deal with the housing and homelessness crisis that was building for a long period of time. But instead of, you know, when that was released a couple of months ago, putting some new money on the table, some new programmes, some new initiatives. Instead of that, this LMP administration says, no, it's somebody else's problem. The Lord Mayor gets up in here and says that he's doing enough. That's what he says. So he brings in a set of words and a motion and he thinks that is enough. So this LMP administration-
Point of order to you, Lord Mayor.
Again, claim to be misrepresented.
Noted.
This LMP administration has been in power for 20 years, Chair. 20 years. You've been here a long time. I think maybe about the same amount of time as the Lord Mayor has. The two longest serving, you and the Lord Mayor, Chair. Been, been here through the majority- Sorry, sorry. They're not in the administration. You are. You are. The Lord Mayor's been in civic cabinet. The Lord Mayor's been in civic cabinet since 2008. He's been in senior positions. He's been the deputy mayor, now he's the Lord Mayor. I mean, this is, of course, the same guy that, that said public housing was slums. That's right. He didn't want his community looking like a Nala. We remember that. So that gives us some insight into the kind of leadership we were to expect from this Lord Mayor. So for 20 years, this LMP administration's been doing the same old thing. And they get up here today and councillor Howard got up today and said Brisbane is the hardest hit in, in Australia. That's what councillor Howard said. That Brisbane is particularly hard hit and the hardest hit. But what are they doing? What does their housing and homelessness strategy say? Nothing new. Nothing new. They have no desire to deliver for the residents of Brisbane. They're, they're interested in the political fight, I guess. And, and I, I get that the Lord Mayor feels he's now in the fight of his life over the next 11 months or so. So he thinks he has to pick these fights along the way. He doesn't, you know, he loves to, when it's a set piece, loves to get on the, on the camera, on the TV when he can control that narrative. And that's what he's trying to do with this Chair. But he just really can't be bothered actually doing his work as the leader of our city. Councillor Howard wanted to hear some ideas and we've been talking about these for a long time. Here's just a couple off the top of my head. The Lord Mayor could increase rates discounts given to community housing providers to assist them in maintaining their current stock. The Lord Mayor could decrease infrastructure charges and development application fees.
Lord Mayor.
It's now approaching nine minutes and councillor Cassidy hasn't said whether he's supporting the motion or not.
It's actually six, keep up.
Not a point of order, Lord Mayor.
The Lord Mayor could decrease infrastructure charges and development application fees for community housing providers to help them build more accommodation. Here's some, there's some ideas and he, and he's got up today and he said, well, those things won't work apparently because we need this thing done today. But forgets the fact that he's been in civic cabinet since 2008. And, and the Lord Mayor could follow in the steps of the Morton- you just wait and see. You just wait and see, Lord Mayor. Now, the Lord Mayor could follow in the steps of the Morton Bay Regional Council or Mackay or Livingstonshire councils and work with community housing providers and developers to deliver tangible solutions to those facing rental stress or homelessness. Perhaps, perhaps council could offer a one-year funding stream as a start as part of its homelessness strategy to community neighbourhood centres to assist with emergency accommodation on the ground in suburbs right across Brisbane. And perhaps open up unused council buildings and partner with organisations like Beddown, who have been desperate to work with council, whether it's in council car parks or council owned buildings that are, that are sitting idle overnight. Here's just some things councillor Howard, that your tired, out of touch, arrogant, lazy, lazy administration could do to help address our housing and homelessness crisis. Community housing providers are telling us, Chair, how difficult it is to get stock built here in Brisbane City Council. They scoff.
Councillor Murphy, please.
So community housing providers worked with the Morton Bay Regional Council and came up with a new model and lo and behold, rapidly started developing new stock because that council came on board and got rid of those fees that were a barrier. But here in Brisbane City Council, under the LMP, they simply don't care. They only care, Chair, about the political fight. They care only about the politics. If they were actually interested, those, those providers that were sitting in that roundtable with the Lord Mayor, if he actually went up to them and said, let's get rid of infrastructure charges for community housing providers to build social and affordable housing and offer a real rates discount, get really development fees, let's talk about zoning in a, in an adult way. If he actually did that, people might say, okay, he's a leader. And he actually cares about addressing the housing and homelessness crisis here in Brisbane. But he did none of those things. He did none of those things. 277 days ago, he got up and said someone else should do something. 277 days later, he's getting up here again saying there's nothing new in his council's approach, but he still thinks someone else should do something. So what this does confirm, Chair sadly, is that apart from this one idea that the Lord Mayor had 277 days ago, he has no others. We will support this idea.
Please, councillors' order. Order, please, councillors.
We support this one idea, but we continue to call- Chair, we continue to call on this lazy, lazy, lazy LMP administration to start doing some work. Start doing some work. You just had a six month, a six week recess. It's been 277 days since your last idea. How about you spend less time giving your mates a restaurant on a bridge and more time addressing the housing and homelessness crisis here in Brisbane? Because, Lord Mayor, you are a failure when it comes to housing and homelessness here in Brisbane.
Thank you. Your points of misrepresentation, Lord Mayor.
Two points of misrepresentation, Mr Chair. Councillor Cassidy repeatedly said there was one idea. I keep forgetting, he has not read the Housing and Homelessness Strategy, which at the back has 26 new initiatives. 26 new initiatives, all of which we are progressing. All of which we are progressing. So councillor Cassidy, please read the document.
Further debate? Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And I too rise to speak in support of this motion. And as the Lord Mayor said, having visited the Pinkham Bar Quarantine Facility, I saw firsthand exactly what the Lord Mayor has laid out before us today. And while more and more people make the decision to live and work in Brisbane, the Queensland state government has been building less and less social housing across the state. And, and I have a question through you, through you, Mr Chair. I see that the leader of the opposition has left the chamber. But through you, I would like to ask, what has the state done in the last two months? What have they done in the last two months? Not much. So the neglect over a number of years has unfortunately resulted in the homelessness soaring that we see in Brisbane today. And as an example, over the last two years, Brisbane Zero has recorded a 49% increase in families experiencing homelessness. Over that same period, only 27% of those families requiring permanent accommodation received an offer in 2022, down from 40% in 2021. The number of people sleeping rough or in their cars right now across Brisbane, including young people and children, is truly heartbreaking. I attended an event with the Brisbane Youth Service just recently. They are at their wits' end. They can't find enough hotel rooms to try and support their people. They are, they are absolutely desperate for something more to happen. The situation has been so pronounced, in fact, that across Queensland, we have seen a 22% rise in homelessness over the last five years, which is almost three times the national average of just 8%. With approximately 50,000 people now currently on the state government's waitlist, we know that what's needed is an immediate response that can provide some of Brisbane's most vulnerable with a roof over their head. The recent decision not to proceed with the activation of Griffith University's student accommodation, coupled with the imminent closure of a number of our city's low cost accommodation providers, means that all options that can provide immediate accommodation assistance to those at risk or experiencing homelessness must be seriously considered. The Pinkham Bar facility was built for a crisis. Well, guess what? We have a crisis and I believe this facility needs to be put to use right now. The 500 bed facility at Pinkham Bar is exceptionally well placed to provide immediate respite to assist those at risk or experiencing homelessness or in a manner that allows for other forms of housing stock to be freed up for those in serious need. I agree with the Lord Mayor when he says that with some minor adjustments, the facility is ready to assist those in their time of greatest need. The Pinkham Bar facility would not require the same, quote, substantive works that were required to bring the Griffith University accommodation up to standard. That is because the Pinkham Bar facility is built to current standards. It is a brand new 500 bed facility that is surely better accommodation than sleeping in the back of a car or a tent. Ask any parents sleeping in a car with their kids if they would rather be sleeping in one of those 500 empty beds at Pinkham Bar rather than sleeping in their car. While we recognise the recent increase in attention towards housing and homelessness, it is disappointing that it's been almost five months since I've visited the Pinkham Bar facility with the Lord Mayor and community service providers without any plans announced by either the state or federal government on the activation of this facility. The Shrinna Council recognises that the Pinkham Bar facility is not without its faults, including its geographic location and the fact that its original intended purpose- its geographic location and the fact that its original intended purpose was to act as a quarantine facility, a purpose which has ultimately never serviced since its completion. To surmount some of the challenges associated with the site and depending on its potential future activation, council stands ready and willing to assist in the provision of transport, library-based services to support the activation of this 500-bed facility. In the midst of one of the greatest shortages of accommodation that Brisbane has ever experienced, the Shrinna Council recognises that more must be done in this regard and that we owe it to all of those sleeping rough in cars, tents and parks to work on a collaborative solution to assist those sleeping rough in cars and tents across Brisbane. We therefore call on the state and federal governments to work together towards activating this 500-bed facility for the purposes of assisting those at risk of experiencing homelessness. We recognise the fact that this facility was not designed for the purposes of temporary or emergency accommodation, Mr Chair. We recognise, however, that neither were cars or tents in public parks. For those here today in this chamber, if you are genuinely concerned about supporting those at risk or experiencing homelessness, supporting this motion helps us to advocate to the state government to unlock the potential this site has to assist those who most need it. I urge you all to support this motion.
Thank you. Further debate, councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair, I rise to speak on the motion before us today. And it's really, really incredibly sad to me that the lord mayor and the LNP councillors are playing politics with this issue. This is simply the LNP administration politicising what is a critical issue for people in the community. If this administration was serious about this, they would be doing something. This is what councillor Howard is actually doing. She's building a basketball court in the inner city, no doubt costing hundreds of thousands of dollars underneath a road in the middle of the city. Imagine if that money was being spent and invested into finding suitable accommodation for emergency accommodation for people, or investing in a site, a block of land, say, where people, we could have some community building, community housing providers building. Let's think maybe if the lord mayor wasn't off on junkets overseas for the Olympics, that perhaps he'd have more time to focus on investing in community and affordable housing. But that's not what they're doing, that's not what they're doing. What they are actually doing is the complete opposite to what they are telling other levels of government to do, and that is failing to invest in affordable and community housing in Brisbane. Now, this is the responsibility of all levels of government and it is incredibly disappointing that the LNP want to politicise this issue. I mean, you heard from councillor Howard herself, the whole time that she has been the chairperson responsible for this part of council. So over the last five years, she said homelessness has increased by 22%, the worst of all the states, I think she said. And that, that just shows how they've been asleep while this problem has been unfolding. And now that there is this, you know, facility out in Pinkenbar, the lord mayor wants to play political games, shirk his responsibilities and try and leverage some sort of political outcome here. The lord mayor has fundamentally failed in this space. He has been in the civic cabinet for the past 15 years. He has been the deputy mayor and the lord mayor for a huge part of that time. Councillor Howard has been the chairperson in this area for two terms and we are not seeing any practical action. Instead, we see this political claptrap being brought forward again today. Here's what should be happening, and this is a big part of the problem. I mean, this is, this is, you know, the lord mayor is concerned about the closure of the Big Bird Backpackers and Clive to Mansions in Spring Hill. Oh my lord, that every single day this administration is allowing commercial and retail building in residential zones all around Brisbane, all around Brisbane. I'm seeing it in my ward. We're getting, we're getting areas that are zoned for residential housing and that is being lost to commercial and retail development. And that's what the lord mayor's administration is doing. They are reducing the supply of residential land in the city. That is not on, that's the first problem. Two, Brisbane City Council has jacked up rates. I mean councillor Fiona Cunningham, the finance chair, must, I don't know how she can stand up with a straight face and talk about rates. Rates in my ward bumped into the 7% cap this year and it was the same last year. This administration is seeing rates double. This is contributing to the high cost of land and property in Brisbane. We are not seeing any real investment in the Brisbane Housing Corporation. We have this fantastic organisation that can be leading the way in our city and this council barely invests in what they're doing. Instead, what they are doing is taking all that money from the CBIC and allowing them to invest it into building units in Tuong that it then sells off for a profit. Why isn't council asking the CBIC to invest in some sort of community or affordable housing? We have a fund that is available to do these things and that could be used today and it's not. Instead, this administration supports funding private development in wealthy suburbs, not community and affordable responses to the emergency situation that we can see today. I agree that whilst the lord mayor wants to give luxury hotels discounts on their infrastructure charges or development fees, there's none for community or affordable housing providers and we need to be looking at some reduction in infrastructure charges. We need to be looking at rates incentives. You know, there are really innovative proposals happening in other states. I don't know that they suit us, but I've heard over in Western Australia, some of the councils are saying to people, we will give you a discount on your rates if you open up your home for lease to people. And I think we should be looking at some sort of scheme for any vacant homes to see whether we can incentivise people to, to open up a housing that otherwise stays, you know, closed for whatever reason. We also need to be doing an audit of our council land to see whether we have any supply that we could then deed to the Brisbane Housing Corporation, for example, so that they have the land and they can start building for the future. Because the lord mayor's not doing any of these things. Councillor Howard is not doing any of these things. She's going to be building a basketball court in the CBD. That is what councillor Howard is going to be doing. And then she stands up in here and she says, oh, well, the state government and the federal government have got to open up Pinkenbar. No councillor Howard, no lord mayor, this council needs to take action. This is, this motion is just purely playing politics and this LNP administration has absolutely failed. They've been in office now for 15 years, the lord mayor has been here all that time in civic cabinet and councillor Howard, two terms as a responsible chair, nothing has changed, nothing has happened. And the only idea they've got is to try and blame two other levels of government for their own inaction. That's not good enough.
Further debate? Any further debate? Lord Mayor?
Mr Chair, thank you to those councils who did contribute to this debate. Particularly thank you to councillor Howard, who was the only councillor that didn't use the opportunity to make personal political attacks as part of this debate. Now, it was interesting because if you actually heard what I said, I didn't say a single negative thing about the state government. I didn't say a single negative... What, what was the thing I said? I actually congratulated the state government on their initiatives. I congratulated them on calling together the summit and the roundtable and I congratulated them on the way they were working with the different levels of government and industry and community. I didn't say a single negative thing. And so what we saw is in councillor Cassidy's pre-prepared, pre-cooked speech, made the assumption that I was somehow going to attack the state government. I did no such thing. But what's become clear now is that I have a much better working relationship with the state government than councillor Cassidy and the Labor councillors do. We actually work with them to get things done. All these people do is play petty party politics and they launch personal attacks. And the more personal attacks that came out of councillor Cassidy's mouth, my colleagues will bear witness to this, I messaged the whole team and said, he's about to backflip. Because you know, the nastier and the more negative he gets, the more he's desperate. And he hates the fact that he has come out previously publicly and bagged this idea, he has opposed this idea publicly and today he is voting for it. There's only one side playing politics here and that is the Australian Labor Party and Labor Party councillors. I just want to see a good outcome for the people of Brisbane. I want to see all three levels of government working together and I want to see 500 roofs over people's heads. Now councillor Cassidy has previously on social media called me delusional for proposing that the quarantine facility be used for crisis accommodation. And today, he has said his councils will stand up and vote with us in favour of it. And that's a good thing. He may not like it, but him and his team have done the right thing today because now, for the first time, we have bipartisan support in this place for what is a good and sensible solution and for what will make a real difference to 500 people who are currently experiencing homelessness. So let's put the politics aside and let's get on with this. Bipartisan support, we can now go up to the state government and say this has bipartisan support, let's get on with it. And Mr Chair, as I mentioned before, councillor Cassidy and councillor Johnston repeatedly made the untrue, false claim that this was the only thing in our housing strategy. They have clearly not read this document. This document, which was released a couple of months ago, they've said a lot about it, but it's quite clear they haven't read it. Every stage of this document and every priority that's listed here, it goes through two things. It goes through existing initiatives and then it goes through a list of new initiatives. And if you go, to make it easy for those reading along, if you go to the back of the document, it's got a summary on page 27 and 28, which includes every single new initiative we are progressing. And there's not one, there's 26 of them, 26 new initiatives, in addition to all of the things that we are already doing and have been doing for years. So this strategy makes 22, 26 recommendations. They are 26 things we are getting on with, they are 26 things we are committed to. And this quarantine facility is just one thing, but it's a positive thing. And so today, I call on every single councillor, please come together, let's get this quarantine facility activated, let's put roofs over 500 people's heads, let's give them the safety, security and dignity that they deserve.
Thank you. I'll now put the motion, those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Seconded.
By the deputy mayor and councillor Landers, ayes to the right, please ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left. Ashley, please close the bars. Thank you, please cease ringing the bells. Councillor Johnston, if you're online, we'll take you as not being here. Thank you, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 22 in favour.
Thank you. Thank you councillors, please resume your seats. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee recommendations.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the recommendations of the Establishment and Coordination Committee during the Autumn Recession 2023, on matters usually considered by that committee, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you, it's been moved by the lord mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor, that the report of the recommendations of the Establishment and Coordination Committee during the Autumn Recession 2023, on matters usually considered by that committee, be adopted. Lord Mayor?
Point of order, Mr Chair, I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause A. I have received hospitality involving attendance at functions, totaling more than $500 but less than $2,000 from the Gambaro Group within the relevant period of time. As such, I will remove myself from the council chamber, the duration of debate and voting on this item.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Any further points of order? No? No? Thank you. Debate?
Thank you, Mr Chair, I rise to speak on item A, the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge Project Retail Leases. The Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, as you know, Chair, is set to provide a hugely popular active transport connection between the Kangaroo Point and the CBD. 470-metre-long bridge will significantly reduce the time that it takes the Kangaroo Point residents and those in Brisbane's eastern and southeastern suburbs to travel to and from our CBD. I've said many times that this is a cross-river connection that has been talked about since the 1800s and this Shrinna Council is delivering it. But the bridge will not only provide that critical cross-river connectivity, it will also be a destination in its own right. That is because atop the bridge will be a restaurant and bar space located over the water at Pier Two. Once complete, it will be one of the only bridges in the world with a boutique bar and restaurant on top. A cafe will also operate at the city landing site, which is perfect for a morning coffee on your commute to work. We expect that more than 6,000 walking, cycling and e-mobility trips will be taken across the bridge each and every day and I know many of those people will want to stop at the restaurant and the bar to take in those incredible views. Come the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games, we'll also be seeing thousands of games-goers travel between the Gabba Stadium and the CBD using the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. They will join bridge users, workers, residents and importantly, visitors to our city at the restaurant and cafe to enjoy outstanding views of the Brisbane River, the CBD, Story Bridge and the Kangaroo Point cliffs. The item before us today, Mr Chair, is to approve the lease for both the restaurant and cafe. And last year, we started what was a very significant national and international search to find tenants for this unique site. We were expecting to receive some incredibly competitive proposals and can I say, Mr Chair, we have received a range of outstanding hospitality operators for the restaurant. We had over 30 expressions of interest for the two tenancies and I'm proud to, command the chamber, the recommended tenderer, Helles ADA Proprietary Limited, part of the Tassus Group of Restaurants, has been recommended for both the restaurant and the cafe. Tassus Group is a well-known Brisbane dining and hospitality scene operator, having popular restaurants which include Massimo, Yamas, Opera Bar and the recently closed George's Paragon. Probably wouldn't be a councillor in the room who hasn't been to George's Paragon at least once. Their proposal for the restaurant included a menu of locally sourced steak and seafood. The restaurant will be named Bombora, an indigenous term for a place where the sea meets the land. We think very fitting for the bridge, Chair. The space will take advantage of the city's outdoor lifestyle, the combination of indoor and alfresco seating. The Tassus Cafe proposal will be wood-fired p- The Tassus Cafe proposal will be wood fired pizza, steak and seafood with takeaway pastries and coffee. In keeping with the active transport theme of the bridge, the cafe will be named Mulga Bills, which is inspired by the Banjo Patterson poem Mulga Bills Bicycle. Aside from their excellent designs and interior concepts, the Tassus Group presented the strongest overall commercial operator, providing the best value for money for ratepayers and councillors can see that in the commercial and confidence data that's included in the submission. In fact, the income from the restaurant and cafe will contribute to the ongoing maintenance costs of the bridge and I can say quite confidently Chair, that the income from both the cafe and restaurant will be more than enough to cover this bridge's annual maintenance bill in perpetuity. So that is a great outcome for ratepayers to have essentially this infrastructure which self-funds its operation and maintenance on an ongoing basis. So I'm also pleased to say, Mr Chair, that Tassus Group is, as we all know, a Brisbane-based company. So it's great to see that despite that very strong competition from national operators, we've actually gone with a Brisbane operator. So that is fantastic to see. Not only is their head office Brisbane-based, but their proposal for the bridge included 100% of their service providers and contractors being based in Brisbane and a 99% local supply chain. So a incredibly strong local offering there from Tassus Group. This opportunity will also create 50 direct jobs for the cafe and then 100 direct jobs for the restaurant. So this cafe and restaurant set Chair will be an incredible employment generator in the city in its own right. Of course, it is a green bridge, Mr Chair, so it was great to see that the Tassus are also committed to using green power for the site as well as a strong commitment to recyclable and reused materials. These restaurant leases will support growth and change on both river peninsulas, both Bombora and Mulga Bills will contribute to the economic growth of the area while also enhancing views of the river and surrounding landscapes. The two food and beverage opportunities will open along with the bridge next year and I look forward to joining Brisbane residents at Bombora and Mulga Bills. Mr Chair, commend this item to the chamber.
Thank you, further debate. Councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thanks very much Chair. I think the Lord Mayor and the Chair of the Transport Committee need to coordinate their lines a little better because the Lord Mayor just said, what was it about 15 minutes ago, council's not a business, we're not into private businesses and then Murphy gets up and says, oh well, we're getting private businesses to maintain public assets, we'll just give them a bit of it, we'll just privatise part of a public green bridge to a private business and they'll maintain that brand new bridge for a period of time. I mean, you know, if this council chair just got on with the basics and did what the people of Brisbane elected them to do, you know, we wouldn't have such high levels of dissatisfaction with council and record levels of people saying they're not getting good value for money from council anymore. It is abundantly clear, when you look at the contracts that come through council and you look at, and you sit here and listen, you look at this contract and you listen to councillor Murphy, you know, one of their senior players, and he talks about how wonderful it is to privatise these public spaces. You know, after 20 years of LMP rule in Brisbane, this is what we get, month in, month out, the privatisation of public spaces. Now, we have been on record of supporting the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge and we voted in favour of that bridge. But when this proposal came to council last year to seek a, or early this year, maybe last year, to seek a proposal for a private operator for a restaurant, we didn't support that and we won't be supporting this contract today. We are strongly in support of public and active transport infrastructure and safe and accessible ways for people to get around Brisbane because, you know, there was clearly a gap in that section. There's also clearly a massive gap in just about every suburb around Brisbane you go to, 6,000 streets without any formed footpath whatsoever, 1,000 kilometres of broken footpaths. But yeah, that's right, don't worry about that, I'll take that injection from councillor Griffiths. As we see, as we talked about earlier, this LMP administration had six weeks of work to bring to council today. Six weeks of recess and there were ENC meetings, dealing with things that came to council and contracts and decisions they needed to make and expenditure and new proposals and things like that. And all we get is this one restaurant, it's one fancy restaurant on a bridge and councillor Murphy says it will enhance, you listen to him, you think it's fantastic, it will enhance the view of the river and the Story Bridge for paying customers, of course. And we know, we know from the project team that were designing this bridge, from their mouths said that this restaurant and the cafe were going to pose a challenge to accessibility on the bridge. It was going to narrow the space and reduce the space for people to be able to safely traverse the bridge, when you've got pedestrians, you've got cyclists, you've got people using e-scooters, you've got people with mobility issues, all interacting around this private space. Did it need a restaurant on it? No. What we were promised was a bridge to enable people to actively travel from one side of the river to the other and then all of a sudden, after a few iterations of design, the LMP out of nowhere just come up with an idea, an idea to give a great deal to an operator that they would never, ever, ever have had before. This space would never have been available to this operator, this public space, but not for the LMP having a bridge specifically designed to cater for a private restaurant. Now, was it November last year where we were asked to vote on increasing Brisbane's debt by $400 million because the metro and the Kangaroo Point Bridge and the small bike bridge at Breakfast Creek had blown out so massively? And the LMP said it was all just material costs, that's all, nothing to see here. But the redesign of this bridge to include a massive private restaurant has clearly contributed to that price blowout. So for councillor Murphy to come in here and say, well, it's a great deal for ratepayers because we don't have to pay for the maintenance on a brand new bridge, but he forgot to say it contributed to the blowout, which was to the tune of $400 million in November last year. You know, they really are in the private business game, clearly. They're making some pretty bad decisions with public money here, really, really bad decisions. So I think, you know, the Lord Mayor, I think, he was talking about social media before, if you go back through the Lord Mayor's social media, it's a shame he couldn't be here today because he's received gifts from prospective contractors. But you look through over those last six weeks, and I'm focusing on that because, you know, we would normally come in here at the first session back and go, well, here's all the work that the LMP had done, we might have agreed with some of it, we mightn't agreed with some of it, it's just one thing, it's all they've done. And when you look, you know, he got all hot on the collar and got angry about the Pinkinbar site, that was one thing that he and his team posted on social media. And the other one thing over those six weeks was this glitzy fancy restaurant because he got to get on the cameras and, you know, it's a nice controlled environment for him. You know, the last thing that team Srinarayya put out, I think, was Happy Easter. Yeah, they're asleep in the wheelchair. When it comes to delivering the basics, they're still on holidays, they're still on recess, really, let's face it. When it comes to delivering the basics, they don't care. There's no interest to them whatsoever. When it comes to delivering a fancy restaurant or scoring some political points, they're all over it. But they're even pretty lazy at that chair, given they've only done that twice in the last six weeks. So instead of just caring about these little glitzy announcements and things that he can put in his living in Brisbane and get on the TV about maybe he should get back to the basics, maybe if he focused on the basics, we wouldn't have a $400 million blowout on these inner city projects, which necessarily mean we get less footpaths in the suburbs, less drainage infrastructure, less parks upgraded, less roads resurfaced, less community facilities upgraded and that long list of suburban upgrades pushed down the line because this LMP administration's focus is just fairly and squarely on the inner city. We heard the deputy mayor take Dorothy Dixer earlier about the inner city strategy. Yeah, they've got a strategy for the inner city and that's resulted in $400 million worth of blowouts in six months, but they don't have a strategy for the suburbs, none whatsoever. And that's really disappointing because that's what people elect these councillors to do. They would hope they've got a strong voice for their communities in here at City Hall, banging on the Lord Mayor's door, saying, where is our money? Where's our return on our rates? But instead, what we've got is every single one of these LMP councillors more interested in a fancy restaurant on the Kangaroo Point Bridge than services out in their suburbs. And we're going to let people right across Brisbane know all about this, Chair.
Thank you. Further debate? Further debate, councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. Just briefly, I support the Green Bridge, but I do not support council commercialising the Green Bridge. These restaurants will inevitably interfere with the safe use of the bridge for its primary purpose, which is for pedestrians and cyclists. It is shocking to see the way in which the Lord Mayor, even now, you know, he's got a conflict of interest. It's shocking to see how he is prioritising the big end of town instead of prioritising the things that need to be done in our suburbs. It takes a year to get a footpath fixed out in my area, a year, and none of this helps deal with those issues. So whilst I support more bridges around Brisbane for active transport, public transport and probably we need some for cars as well, I do not support commercialising the bridges and I don't support these leases.
Any further debate? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And I have been in this chamber not quite as long as yourself and definitely not as long as councillor Cunningham and councillor Griffiths, but I was having a little bit of deja vu today when we're talking about the sky falling in from a restaurant that's going to be on the new Green Bridge. I'm pretty sure that is exactly what we heard from councillor Hinchcliffe not 10 years ago of what was going to happen with Howards Smith Wolves. It was going to be a nightmare. It was going to be the end of the world as we know it.
It is for pedestrians.
Councillor Johnston.
It is, one of the most beloved precincts in the city. And we make no apologies for having reasons for friends and visitors and relatives and tourists to come and spend time in our city. If that one extra night of staying in that city is because they're going to book into that restaurant on the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge and spend their money in the city. The hyperbole here from those opposite, that the focus is on the inner city, it is absolutely not. The focus in my portfolio is in the inner five Ks because that is where 83% of the Olympic Games venues are going to be holding events. And the groaning from the councillor for Forest Lake, I assure you, he'll be there having his dinner on that restaurant as soon as it's opened. Just like we saw councillor Hinchcliffe down in the beers at Felons as soon as it opened as well. So what they say and what they do are two very different things in this place. As for the inner city blowouts, what is the cross river rail through you, Mr Chair? Blowout councillor Murphy? It's pretty significant. So pot kettle black on that side, we've heard this all before, this is not about handing over to the big end of town to run council projects. This is about getting a great outcome that makes Brisbane more livable, gives reasons for tourists to come and spend in the city. It's done from scratch, so the interaction with the pedestrians and the movement across the bridge will be seamless. And I can assure you, I don't want to see one of those suited bottoms sitting in that restaurant after this hogwash we've just heard.
Is there any further debate? No further debate? Now move to the vote on this item, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Chords by councillor Cassidy and the deputy mayor. Ayes, ring the bells, ayes to the right, noes to the left. Councillor Johnston, can I take you as a no and councillor Wines as a yes? Okay.
I'm a no.
You no, not abstaining? No? Yep, fine, thank you. Okay, thanks Ashley, please close the bars. Plaques, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and 5 against.
Silence please, can you read that again, please?
Certainly. The ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and 5 against.
Thank you. Councillors, please return to your seats. Is the Lord Mayor returning or the deputy mayor, you can read the report? We can proceed, deputy mayor, if you'd like to move the motion.
Mr Chair, I move that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the Autumn Recession 2023 on matters usually considered by the committee be noted. Seconded.
Thank you, it's been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of the council during the Autumn Recession 2023 on matters usually considered by that committee be noted. Is there any debate?
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, deputy mayor.
I have a declarable interest in clause A, I have received hospitality involving attendance at functions totaling more than $500 but less than $2,000 from Brisbane Airport Corporation within the relevant period. As such, I will remove myself from the chamber for the duration of the debate on this item.
Thank you. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, ditto. I have a declarable conflict of interest. I've received hospitality involving attendance at functions at the Brisbane Airport totaling more than $500 but less than $200 from the Brisbane Airport Corporation within the relevant period. As such, I will remove myself from the chamber for the duration of debate and voting on this item.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cunningham.
Mr Chair, I rise to speak on item A, a deed of variation to an agreement between council and the Brisbane Airport Corporation. As it is owned by the Commonwealth, the land on which Brisbane Airport operates, it is not ratable by Brisbane City Council. In 2001, council and the Brisbane Airport Corporation entered into an agreement for payments in lieu of council rates and charges. It allowed for payments to council equivalent to the amount that would be payable for rates if rates were legally able to be levied for parts of this airport site. Under the agreement, an independent valuation from the state government is to be used to calculate the rates equivalent amounts. The agreement in the report deals with rates for the 2022 to 2023 financial year and beyond, with agreement on the valuation year to be used for 2223, an agreement that BAC will provide a valuation for the 2324 financial year to be used going forward for the appropriate timeframe as set out in the agreement with council. No recalculation of the previous year's rates and charges will be conducted and the deed confirms prior rates calculations remain valid. By coming to this agreement, council's revenue from BAC for this non-ratable site is secured and I thank the officers involved in this agreement. As always, they are protecting ratepayers' interests in coming to this amount. I commend it to the chamber, Mr Chair.
Thank you, further debate, councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thanks very much Chair. And the LMP is still always riding on Labour's coat tails for all those good things that happened here in Brisbane. So back in 2001, under the Sawley administration, this arrangement was set in place to ensure that there was a return to the ratepayers of Brisbane, for a parcel of land that isn't required to pay rates. So congratulations to that previous Labour administration in getting that work done and making sure then it was easy for the LMP to carry on with it. We support this item today because without this deed of variation, this agreement with BAC, the ratepayers of Brisbane wouldn't get this return. So we are of course in support of that today and congratulate that visionary Labour administration of the early 2000s.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? Councillor Cunningham? No? I move to the vote on this item, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. We have one more. We have one more report. This is the important report for the day. Can we send out a message, please, to get the Lord Mayor and the deputy mayor to return, please? Lord Mayor? We're up to the Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the 28th of April 2023.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that the Establishment and Coordination Committee, sorry, the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 28th of April, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, 28th of April 2023 be adopted. Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I go on, just wanted to make an observation on the conflict of interest laws introduced by the state government, which see my attendance and the deputy mayor's attendance at functions in official capacities now becoming a conflict of interest. So what we have is, under the law, the current term of office and the previous term of office, so 2016 until today, being taken into account. So when you attend a function, whether you have a drink or whether you stick to the water, whether you eat the hors d'oeuvres or not, you have to declare a value of that hospitality. And now what we see is effectively seven years' worth of attendance at functions now tipping us over the threshold where there's a so-called conflict of interest. Now, doing our job, which involves attending a myriad of functions across the city, and whether it's the Brisbane Airport or a number of other organisations, now tips us into that situation where we have to declare a conflict of interest. It is ridiculous because being invited to a function and going to a function doesn't mean that I am somehow conflicted with that organisation. That's the reality of it. But anyway, we will continue to abide by the rules, while ever they are rules. And this is a case of, I guess, illustrating that the rules aren't necessarily right or getting the right balance at this point in time. Mr. Chair, as I always do, I just wanted to mention the lighting up of council assets this week. Last night, our assets were lit up in purple to support Domestic and Family Violence Prevention Awareness Month. And every month, Queensland marks Domestic and Family Violence Awareness Month to raise community awareness about this critical issue and to send a clear message that violence in families and homes will not be tolerated. Tonight, the Story Bridge were lit up in green to support Lung Health Awareness Month. This campaign raises awareness about the importance of lung health and the signs and symptoms of lung disease. The disease affects around 7 million Australians and is the second-leading cause of death in this country. On Wednesday night, our assets will be returned to purple again for Domestic and Family Violence Prevention Awareness Month. On Thursday, we'll light up the assets in blue and green for the Anywhere Festival. The Anywhere Festival makes it possible for local creatives to perform their craft anywhere, allowing them to take their talent and creativity to all different nooks and crannies around the city. On Friday night and over the weekend, the Story Bridge will be lit up in multiple different colours, reflecting the 16 NRL teams that are playing in the magic round. The NRL Magic Round is a massive event in our city's calendar and kicks off this Friday night at Suncourt Stadium. Last Tuesday obviously was Anzac Day. And despite the inclement weather, it was great to see so many people out across the city commemorating the service of servicemen and women who have, in some cases, in too many cases, given everything in the service of this country and for the values that this country represents, those values of freedom and democracy. And it was wonderful to be part of the dawn service here in Anzac Square. And even though it did rain, there was a massive crowd and the rain didn't keep them away. My daughter Octavia asked to come along. It wasn't something that we suggested to her. She wanted to come and it was great to have her there at the dawn service as well. I don't think she realised what it means getting up at 2:45 a.m., but she did well and it was great to see so many young kids out for the dawn services and Anzac Day services right across the city. There is no doubt that future generations, whether they're young primary school kids, whether they're high school kids or students or whether they're young adults, they understand the importance of that service to our community. And while those generations have, you know, like us, not experienced war firsthand, they do understand the critical importance of that service to our nation and to our country and the values that we support around the world. And so I think Anzac Day as a tradition is in very good shape and improving and, you know, getting more and more people across the community involved is a great thing. It was also good to be with councillor Adaman out at the Shell Green Cricket Match at Brookfield, a wonderful tradition that has been going how many years now, Greg? 12 years, so a dozen years. And it celebrates and reenacts, in some ways, a cricket match that was held on the beaches of Gallipoli. And the match was held as a diversionary tactic while the withdrawal from Gallipoli was being planned. And so literally Shell Green because there were shells falling while the cricket match was playing. And the other thing that was really important about this particular location and this particular match is it acknowledges the contribution of Sri Lankans in the war effort. And a lot of people don't realise that the headquarters at Gallipoli was guarded by a group of Sri Lankan soldiers. They were called the Salon Planters. And so there was very much a multinational effort. We talk about the Australian and New Zealand forces, we talk about the British forces. There are also a range of other Commonwealth countries that were involved, including Sri Lanka and soldiers from Sri Lanka there. So we always on the day have a great Sri Lankan contingent that comes along and supports the game as well. So congratulations councillor Adaman and your community for keeping that tradition alive. Over the weekend, it was great to be with councillor Cunningham for the Stones Corner Festival. And the festival now in its eighth year continues to be more and more popular each year. There was a short break during the pandemic, but it's back. And that is a wonderful and thriving part of the city. But also, the festival celebrates what's great about Stones Corner, but also what's great about the lifestyle in Brisbane that supports live music, supports food trucks and activation and community events and festivals that come together and supporting local business as well. So it ticks all of those boxes and helps bring to life such an important and thriving part of the city and one that we're continuing to invest in. Stones Corner has really had a new lease of life since we invested in Hanlon Park, Baruda, and it is now a place that people want to be. And it's exciting to see a really positive vibe in Stones Corner about the future. So it was great to be there on the weekend. Item A before us is the appointment of the deputy chair of council. And so that is councillor Steve Toomey. Congratulations councillor Toomey on this appointment. So councillor Toomey will become the deputy chair of council as part of this appointment. But I can confirm today that when you vacate this chair, Mr. Chair, councillor Toomey will become the new chair of council. So keep that seat warm. But councillor Toomey will do a fantastic job both as deputy chair and as the future chair. And I know you, Mr. Chair, will help support that transition and teach him everything you know. And looking forward, councillor Toomey, to seeing you in the chair and continuing your great service, not only to your local ward, but also to this chamber as well. Items B and C relate to the appointments of new councillors. And so item B is the appointment of Lucy Collier as the councillor for Morningside and also locking in place the membership of committees. And item C is the appointment of Trina Massey as the councillor for the Gabber Ward and also to the membership of standing committees. I want to particularly congratulate Lucy, I think Lucy's here. And I'm not sure if Trina's here. But particular congratulations to Lucy and Trina on their appointments. Very much look forward to working with you on various issues, engaging with you on various debates, but also, most importantly, the non-political side of this role, which is big, the engagement with local communities, the work with community groups, the identification of improvements that can be made in your local area. And I certainly wish both Lucy and Trina all the best in their new roles. There is definitely a steep learning curve, but I know there's also plenty of people that will be ready to assist if that assistance is requested and provide advice if that advice is requested. But it is a very unique role that... You're looking at me in a strange way.
Oh, yes, your time has expired.
Please extend.
Thank you. I thought you were about on the cusp of concluding. Yes, councillor Landers.
Mr. Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
Thank you. Have a motion moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton for an afternoon tea adjournment. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Welcome back councillor Cumming to afternoon tea. Okay, councillors, we're up to further speakers on the E and C special report. Are there further speakers? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak in support of these items before us today. So we can never be accused of supporting some things that the administration brings to this chamber. Firstly, I'd like to start by acknowledging the exceptional service that Cara Cook, as we can now call her, not councillor Cook, but just Cara Cook, as the former councillor for Morningside, gave as their representative for five and a half years or so. Cara won that by election in Morningside Ward in January 2018 convincingly, with a 3.5% swing and a 10% margin. To say that Cara has left her mark on the Morningside Ward would be an understatement. We're sad to lose her here in the chamber, but I'm very confident that the Labor Party has found a more than suitable replacement in Lucy Collier, who is with us today in the public gallery and who I'll speak more about shortly. While I have this opportunity, I just wanted to share a little bit more about Cara, the one-time Yopoun Pineapple Festival fundraising queen, mother, lawyer, advocate for survivors of domestic and family violence, and of course, her time as the councillor for the Morningside Ward. Cara will tell you some of her proudest achievements include initiating Brisbane's first domestic violence strategy for the city of Brisbane, the first homelessness strategy, and the hard fought for introduction of virtual or hybrid council meetings, which we have with us in the chamber today. Some other achievements include establishing an open pantry and community library at her ward office, securing the first council funding in the country for domestic violence training organisation, Hairdressers With Hearts, and supporting organisations like Open Haven, Micra Projects, Wellspring Hub and Care Kits For Kids. I should also mention Cara's tireless work to save the former East Brisbane Bowls Club and her advocacy for naming of Rollo Park after Brisbane music identity Brenton Rollison. Cara, her husband Josh and their three children should be immensely proud of the contribution that her family has made to both Morningside Ward and Brisbane city more broadly. Whatever Cara decides to do next, I'm sure she'll undertake the next chapter of her professional career with dedication, good humour and a desire to help others. So we thank Cara for her time in this chamber and know that the residents of Morningside Ward are better for having had her as their councillor. And so having said all those great things about Cara's time in council, you might imagine that it would be hard for someone to fill those shoes, but knowing the new councillor can almost say that councillor Lucy Collier, the incoming councillor for Morningside Ward, you would appreciate that the ward is in very safe hands. Lucy was born in Brisbane, grew up in the Hawthorn area. She knows her community inside and out. Having a young family and seeing how much the suburbs of the Morningside Ward are growing and changing, Lucy understands that residents are crying out for more from their council. Amenities like parks and footpaths need more investment. Flood mitigation must be a priority for those riverside suburbs. Services like the Norman Park Fair should absolutely be restored. And while Lucy takes up the fight in City Hall, she also has committed to continuing much-loved community events like hocus pocus and movies in the park. She will continue to champion local small businesses, sporting clubs and community organisations like the Belimba Community Centre, Beeleron Community Farm and the Morningside Panthers, just to name a couple. She will also remind the LMP that there is more to Brisbane than the inner city and the Lord Mayor's vanity projects and that the suburbs of Brisbane have been forgotten for far too long. Lucy and the Labor for Brisbane team will fight to ensure that residents are no longer paying more and getting less for their rates. I want to thank Lucy, her husband Matt and their daughter Maisie for making the decision to step into a role like this, takes dedication and a strong network of support. Not sure Maisie actually expressed a view necessarily, but she will absolutely be part of that journey with Lucy and Matt. The residents of the Morningside Ward are getting an enthusiastic, motivated and energetic representative in councillor Collier. I'm pleased to have her as part of our Labor for Brisbane team and look forward to working alongside her to hold this LMP administration to account in this place and across the city and see a change in Brisbane come March 2024. I'd also like to congratulate Trina Massey as being selected as the Greens' replacement for councillor at Shrewang and Arthur. I don't think she is here today looking up there, but I met her at the last council meeting we had and gave her my best wishes. And I certainly look forward to working with her and seeing the approach she brings to this job because I think we can all agree, the last Greens' councillor for the Gabber Ward certainly brought a very unique approach to the work that he did in this place as well. And I'm sure she'll be a passionate advocate for her community. And congratulations to councillor Toomey on resuming your duties as deputy chair of council and then taking over at some point. The Lord Mayor might have given something away. You perhaps will be leaving a little earlier than March next year. And that's entirely your decision, Chair, whether you do that or not. So congratulations to councillor Toomey and look forward to looking at you eye to eye rather than looking down at the back of your head. Congratulations.
Well said. Any further debate? No further debate? We put the motion. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee decisions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the Autumn Recession 2023 on matters usually considered by the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee be noted.
Seconded. Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay that the report setting out the decisions of the Establishment and Coordination Committee as delegate of council during the Autumn Recession 2023 on matters usually considered by the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee be noted. Is there any debate? Councillor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on item A of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee recess report, which is the formal naming of a picnic pavilion in Free Park, Milton, as the Robyn Evans Picnic Pavilion. Robert Evans was an Australian Grand Slam tennis champion and Milton local. The naming of the pavilion as the Robyn Evans Picnic Pavilion was supported as a fitting way to recognise her contribution to her sport. Mr. Chair, I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Is there any further debate? No further... Oh, sorry.
I also rise to speak in regards to item A and what I think is an important park naming for Free Park. As councillors would know, Free Park originally was the Milton Tennis Centre, and so it has a long and proud history of tennis representation, not only locally, nationally, but internationally as well. There have been so many great people that have come through there. We have sections of the park already named, and so now we add Robyn's name as well to it. And as the Chair was saying, Robyn... And as the Chair was saying, Robyn Evans was an Australian Grand Slam tennis champion and a Milton local. During the 1960s, she was a force to be reckoned with on the court, bringing home the gold in the Australian Doubles Championships in 1962 and 63, and the US Doubles Championships in 1963. Robyn has also made it to the quarterfinals at Wimbledon, the French Open, the US Open, and the semi-finals at the Australian Open three times. But when she wasn't competing on the world stage, Robyn could often be found practising at her local courts down in Free Park, where she was a fixture of the local tennis community. As we know, Free Park has a special place in Brisbane's sporting history as the home of the Roy Emerson Tennis Centre, which was formerly known as the Milton Tennis Centre. This hallowed ground remains an iconic part of the tennis tradition in Queensland, as well as a much-loved community park. Brisbane has an impressive roster of tennis players, and I believe that the recognition of Robyn Evans' significant contribution to the sport through this place, through this place naming, is a fitting tribute to Robyn, her family, and her great achievements. I'd also like to take the opportunity to acknowledge the hard work of all those tennis fans and supporters, the petition that they put together in order to garner support. I know it took work, but it was eagerly embraced by so many members of the community and broadly. And as the local councillor, I'm very proud to be able to support this, recognition of Robyn, and as it continues that fine historical significance and recognition in Free Park, so that the future generations know what it meant to our city and what these people meant to our country. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. Any further debate? Councillor Davis? Now move the motion. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We've moved forward the consideration of the notified motions, so the next item is petitions. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Cumming.
Thank you. I have a petition here from a considerable number of residents of the Manly-Manly West area, seeking to have a roundabout, two roundabouts replaced with traffic lights. So present that to the chamber. Thank you. Nice. Yep.
Thank you. Any further petitions? Councillor Landers.
Mister Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Strunk that the petition as presented be received, referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. General business. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? No one rising to their feet. Are there any matters of general business? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I rise very briefly about the Lenham May Fair this weekend. I encourage all councillors to come down. It's a great free community event, surrounded... The only thing you have to pay for is to support the Marchant Ward and Inogra Ward community there at Lenham Park. Free professional entertainment, the Franciscans on the hill, Padua and Mount Orvernia, absolutely outstanding. They are just as good, sorry, if not better, than some of the paid acts. The talent from our youth is unbelievably strong in the music and arts in our communities. And I'd thank the Franciscans on the hill for their attendance. It'd be remiss of me not to thank Inner North Rotary for all their hard work that they do in helping us organise the stall, also my three staff. Caroline, who won't be with me for much longer, we'll miss you Caroline, Elizabeth and Anthony for all their hard work. And Rotary, I've just got to say again, thank you so much, because I can be a bit bossy on the setup, putting up the tents and everything else, because it was my baby that I started back in 2008. I couldn't do it without you. I know you've been very tolerant, and I also understand that you're appreciative that I'm not as bossy as what I was a few years ago. But anyone who was free on Saturday from 12 o'clock to 5 for the entertainment, please come down. And if you want to see Paddington Two at the wonderful Grange Library, who are helping us host that event, please come on down. It's a great community event. The people of Marchant, Inogra, McDowell, anyone on the north side really enjoy this event. And sorry, Hamilton Ward residents do come as well. But again, I encourage everybody, thank you so much Rotary, thank you to my staff for all your hard work. Thank you to Caroline in my office, who will be, can I say, leaving me to go to councillor Davis. You will be missed, and we do appreciate every bit of hard work you've done in support of the Marchant Ward. And I know that councillor Davis will be just as appreciative of your dedication and hard work. Thank you.
Any further general business? Councillor Cumming.
Thanks. I'd like to give my second final speech. And I can't rule out I won't be back here in the next couple of weeks and give a couple more, but no, no, it's all right. Seriously, I had nearly, I was rushing, I'd hoped to have it finished last week and didn't quite get there. I know a lot of people, I know supporters of mine that were listening to the speech, and when councillor Maddick had a short, they were thinking of getting a squad together to catch up with councillor Maddick. But I said, look, he was just following the rules, you know. I said, he's, he used to be a solicitor, he's used to rules, so he was just following the rules. Anyhow. Oh, righty, good. So the public transport, I mean, I think councillor Cassidy mentioned it a bit, but I have caught the train from Winham Central to Brisbane Central for all the time I've been here. If you're taking into account caucus meetings as well and civic receptions, I think I've used the train something like 60 times a year. And I know it sounds a bit very minor, and it is, but I'd see this as my contribution towards reducing greenhouse gases. And it also means that when they come to trade in the cars that I've used over the years, that there's not many kilometres on them, and they're a good buy for whoever bought them. I'd like to thank all the council staff, and also the chairs of council and the CEO's office for all the assistance over the years. There's so many that have done such great work for me over the years that I can't name anyone personally, I think that'd be unfair, but I'm really happy with what they've done for me. And the CEOs at various, at various times, they always give you a good straight answer to your question, and a straight and a factual answer, and it's always good to hear what the CEO's got to say on an issue. I'd also acknowledge the charitable achievements of the Brisbane City Council over the years. In my early days, Lord Mayor Jim Sawley would get some corporate donations for people doing it tough around Christmas time, and he'd ask what organisations in the local area could use with a bit of money, and he would hand out the money accordingly. And he sometimes would use other groups in the area who were very much in touch with the community, like the Winham Family Daycare Group, who they recommended that the money could be distributed to. So he did a good job in that way, I believe. But subsequently, Lady Marys, who have been very generous to my area, and particularly to a famous name in Winham Manly, Babby. And Babby is the Bayside Adolescent Boarding Inc., and it's the leading youth and family services provider in the Winham Redlands region. And it's been responding to the needs of young people who are homeless or at risk of homelessness since the early 1980s. And so they've always been treated generously by the Lady Marys since the time I've been in there, and I thank them for that very much. And they've done other, they've supported other groups in my area too, and I'm very happy with that. The other thing that a few people have asked me is, what am I going to do when I'm retired? Well, you probably noticed in the recent year or so, my limping's got worse, and it's because I've got pretty bad arthritis in my knees. I think that's what 36 years of soccer does to you, from eight to 46, and plus a bit of running and a fair bit of table tennis, a fair bit of cricket. And, but anyhow, it all adds up. So I need my knees done, and I've just got to get over my cowardice of being afraid of big operations. Once the medical problems are fixed, I anticipate being able to play more table tennis, which I've played for many years, and I think I'm reasonably competent at, but I'm going backwards as well. But also more tennis as well, which is a game I only started a few years ago, and I'm pretty terrible at, but I enjoy it, out in the fresh air. So I've also considering offering to coach junior in soccer and cricket or both, one or the other or both, and they're sports that I loved and people taught me when I was a kid, so I think it's time I put some more back into the game. I've also intended being active in our general community in Winham Manly, which is a great local community. So I always enjoyed historical society meetings, for example. I sell raffle tickets once every six weeks for the Manly Later RSL down at the Manly Hotel, and I'm a member of the Citizens Auxiliary of that group. And I also intend going on some holidays overseas and in Australia. My late mother managed two overseas trips and one Australian holiday every year for 20 years, starting about my age, but I can't see me matching that. But that would be the target, but it's probably, I wouldn't be able to do anything else if I was doing that much. I'd also like to thank all the retiring councillors, councillor McLaughlin, councillor Maddick, councillor Cook and councillor Sri Ranganathan for their participation, their involvement in council over the years. I think everyone in their own way has done a terrific job, and we all work hard. And I think there will however be some tough contests in the next council election between Labour and Green councillors and LMP sitting members, and it'll be an interesting election. I'm sure there'll be some changes in seats this time, I can't see it being the status quo like it was last time. I really appreciate all the handshakes you gave me at the last meeting, I was flattered by that, I really thank you for that. And also I got some lovely going away gifts from my Labour colleagues as well. So I hope that the Labour Party will be in a position to appoint a replacement for me in the near future, and you won't have to hear this again. So thank you for your time.
Return the gifts. Is there any further general business? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair. I rise to speak on recent community events, and also just want to thank councillor Cumming for, we had a brief conversation at the end of chamber's last recess, and I got my apology, so I'm happy with that, and we're moving on with life. The recent community events have been a lot. Last weekend I had Buddha's Birthday, which is now being held at the Chungten Temple, which is a shame for Brisbane, but obviously the temple out there in Logan is an extraordinary place. They have thousands of people go through that, and Mayor Power is always very welcoming for me when I tune up at the Buddha's Birthday out there, and what they do there is just amazing. I had my local Sunnybank Athletics, they had their AGM in their presentation. The AGM, the people there who do the work as a volunteer is incredible. One lady's, you know, they've been doing it for 20 years, and they need to start succession planning now, so hopefully somebody, another parent up and coming with young kids is going to be prepared to step up into those places, because it's desperately needed, but they do fabulous work. I went along to the Bangla New Year and Harmony Day event as well. It's not a community that I've had a lot to do with in the past, but they're lovely people, and I was delighted to be able to be there. Obviously, they're celebrating the New Year Day a little bit later this year, and they hadn't had any for a couple because of Covid, so they were very happy to be able to get back together as a community and celebrate. And then I was also at the Cambodian Vision event that they had out there at Landmark the other night, and that was another big crowd of people. And hearing the stories and what they do in that Cambodian Vision, like obviously my background being medical, I was very interested to hear what they do. And all the doctors, all the medical staff, you know, ophthalmologists and, you know, anesthetists and everybody, all donate their time and their own expenses to get their way out there, and also their own accommodation, everything, they pay for everything themselves, and then donate their time to help all of these hundreds and hundreds, in fact, thousands of people and children in Cambodia. And they're now starting to extend to the hearing sector over there as well, so I can't wait to see what they do in that space. They invited me to go along and visit them sometimes, so I plan to take them up on one of my recess trips and pay for myself to go out there to Cambodia and have a look and see what they can do. And the final thing was the Sunnybank Lions finally turned 60 just this year, so congratulations to them. I think most of us all know Lions clubs are unfortunately like going the way of neighbourhood watchers and not necessarily growing their membership very much, so it was nice that they could still be there after 60 years, and hopefully we can do something to get a new generation of members to those clubs. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marks. Further general business, councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I want to commence my comments tonight here in general business about a retiring police officer that left the service a couple of weeks ago. Senior Sergeant Craig McKenzie, retired as officer in charge of the Anala Police Station after more than 20 years of service in that station as the officer in charge. And that doesn't happen all that often, especially in the metropolitan areas, because most are in those sort of positions for well less than that time, so senior officers tell me. But the trust that they had in this man, Craig McKenzie, for all those years in what was a challenging station, still is a challenging station, but, and it's a station that actually a lot of trainees that come out of the academy, which is within the actual catchment of the station, choose to ask for, because there's some really good training there, and it really does well to actually be part of that station, especially when you have an officer in charge like Craig McKenzie, who works with those newly graduated officers from the academy, and makes sure that he helps them in their careers going forward. Craig McKenzie, I was very fortunate to, that Craig and I both started working in the area of Anala. I started in the electorate office for Henry Paliché. Craig started six months before me, but so we really started about the same time, and he was one of those officers that, you know, if someone came in with an issue to do with policing, or it could be anything that they may need some help with from police, from that particular service, you would be able to just pick up the phone and talk to the man who first of all knew and understood what the issues were that I was trying to express awkwardly at times, because I didn't have all the knowledge and especially the jargon that they speak. And but he, and he really respected the fact that someone would just pick up the phone rather than send a message off to the police minister or to the department, which caused a ministerial to be created. And he told me in the first few years that I worked with him that ministerials cost a lot of money, and it does take a long time to achieve the same thing. So just pick up the phone and we'll see if we can solve that problem. And my, whether it be Henry Paliché or Anastasia Paliché, said continue to do that, because that was a really good way of getting something done quickly. So congratulations, Craig. Now, he spent 40 years in the service, just a few days shy of 40 years. They have to retire at 60 years of age. There's no recourse, basically. It all has to do with superannuation, I'm told, but it was really sad that we're, and we're going to miss him, because even at 60 years of age, he still had the passion for what he does, and I wish him well in retirement, of course, like we all did. We had a bit of a going away party at the academy a couple of weeks ago, and people and serving officers and retired officers came from across Queensland to actually come to the do that night, and it really just shows the respect that they had for the man. I just want to also speak on a couple of events that actually happened recently, in the last few weeks. Of course, we have the Anzac Day services, both at Forest Lake in my ward and also at Isa Park. I just want to congratulate the organisers, but I also want to say some really kind words to the council officers who absolutely looked after and made sure that those two memorial areas were absolutely pristine. You know, they had flowers, they had everything. The plantings were fantastic, and it was just a picture of what a park should look like all the time, actually. And pretty much these two areas are looked after through the year. And pretty much these two areas are looked after through the year, but there's some special attention given, of course, and I just want to congratulate those officers who took the time and the trouble and I'm sure they're a bit passionate about it as well themselves. Also, I just want to say that last, was it Sunday, we had the Day of Mourning at the Freedom Place at Anala, which was the fourteenth year, that the Day of Mourning was held by the Vietnamese community. And of course, the former councillor Milton Dick was very much, along with Dr Quang Buie, were the pioneers of that particular area called Freedom Place Memorial to the, of course, the surviving and to also to recognise the many thousands of people who were fleeing Vietnam back in the seventies. And many, many came, of course, to Australia and Canada and other places as well. And many, 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 many thousands lost their lives in those boat journeys through to Australia. And it's really, the Vietnamese community really never forgets those people who gave up their lives in fleeing Vietnam from the communists. And also, of course, they also, it's also a time to sort of recognise that the Vietnamese community have become so much a part of the Brisbane community. Their integration has been nothing less than phenomenal and they haven't forgot also to help others as well. And whether it's a disaster or others, you know, people in refugee camps overseas, they are the first ones to raise the money in substantial amounts of money to make that available to those that are less fortunate than themselves. And I'm just so, you know, so proud to sort of be able to represent their interests through council and help them where I can. But honestly, they really know how to look after others as well, so thank you Chair.
Any further general business?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I just rise to acknowledging the finishing of councillor Cunningham and also councillor Cook. Oh, Cunningham, I had that written down, it was.
What a word!
Oh, no. Sorry about that. Sorry about that, councillor Cunningham, that's actually what I had crossed out. Coming, to acknowledge, acknowledge the leaving of councillor Cumming and also the leaving of councillor Cook. Both those people I've met through the Labor Party and I've been very impressed by them and impressed by how they've contributed to our team. Both have become friends of mine and that's a rare thing in politics, but it's a good thing. I know from our caucus meetings, obviously we can't say a lot, we can't say anything about that actually, but there are certainly very strong views that were held by both you Pete and by Cara and those, that led to some interesting meetings within our caucus and within decisions that we made as a team. I think surviving here twenty years is a long time, so surviving here twenty-seven years is incredible. Twenty-nine years is incredible. And I think councillor Cook did well surviving the five years that she did with everything going on with her. I wish, obviously wish you both all the best for the future and it sounds like you've got a bit of fun ahead of you. In regards to Lucy, the new member of the team, councillor, will be councillor Collier, I look forward to working with her. I know she's, I've worked with her before, very active member of the community and very capable member of the community, of, will be bringing a lot of skills to our team and I think that's a good thing. And of course, I wish the other retiring councillors, councillor Maddock, councillor McLaughlin, all the best with their endeavours. It's a very difficult game we're in. No matter how you play it, it is a difficult job, the public expectations are very high. And I think my observation of most people, they do their best with the skills they've got at the time. Okay, thank you.
Any further general business? councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks very much Chair. I just want to rise tonight to speak about the national early warning system for flood and fire and other emergencies that the Lord Mayor spoke about earlier today. And there seems to be some confusion around how that system was used. I'm not sure why there's confusion because the Lord Mayor was chairing the LDCC at the time during that weekend of the February 2022 floods. And seems to have for a long time suggested that the sole reason that people weren't warned early enough was because the system didn't send messages early enough. That's the claim that the Lord Mayor has pursued and we've heard it again today and that not enough messages were sent. What we know from the review, from IGM last year, was that Brisbane City Council only requested three messages to be sent out. There were ninety-four requests for councils in the, mostly in the broader South East Queensland region, including Scenic Rim and Gimpy. Gimpy requested seven, Scenic Rim eleven, Moreton Bay nine, Gold Coast eight, Logan twenty-two. And those councils were able to get those requests in earlier than Brisbane City Council and have those messages delivered earlier. Sure, that system is absolutely not perfect, wasn't perfect, should be improved and is going to be improved. But what the situation we saw over that weekend was that council didn't warn, using its own system, as flawed as that was and as few people as signed up as that system had, didn't use that system to warn people about imminent flooding, whether that be river flooding or creek and overland flooding like experienced in my community. And when I did RTI recently to ascertain the timeline around the requests for those flooding messages to be sent out through the national system, the Lord Mayor's talked a lot about, what we know now is that that request wasn't sent in for the first message until seven thirty PM on the Sunday night. So the Thursday, the bomb and council were warning about rain Thursday afternoon, increasing through Friday, increasing through Saturday and a lot of communities were flooding on Saturday as well. Sunday, that got intensified and by four o'clock from memory on the Sunday afternoon, the north side was totally cut off. Every road north of about Zulmia, if you draw a line east-west, was totally cut off and places were being seriously inundated. By about six thirty or seven PM that Sunday night, there was two metres of water through homes in Deegan. And at seven thirty PM, the Lord Mayor put his first request in for a message to be sent. The form was dated seven thirty PM. At seven forty-four PM, a council officer sent that form to the emergency management coordinator to have that message sent out. And in this email chain, there's, the Lord Mayor's political advisers are at the top of this email chain, communicating amongst themselves at eight forty-three PM advising that the texts had just gone out at eight forty-three PM. And one of those advisers had already received that and it was branded Brisbane City Council. So if the Lord Mayor hadn't delayed in sending those messages, if the Lord Mayor hadn't fiddled around and waited and waited and waited, more people would have been warned. If those messages were requested to be sent to places that were going to experience serious flooding other than the Brisbane River flooding, more people would have been warned and we wouldn't have had such a serious situation where neighbours had to rescue neighbours and take people to strangers' homes just to survive the night. So when the Lord Mayor gets up and, you know, crows about the failure of some system that he didn't even engage with, that other councils left him for dead when it came to leading in their communities and responding to a disaster and caring and showing concern about those local residents, I take what the Lord Mayor says on this subject, you know, with a pinch of salt. You can't trust what he says. You can trust what's in black and white, what's released under a right to information and that the Lord Mayor delayed and daddied in getting a message sent out. We know for a fact that none of those messages that came through council's weather zone warnings warned about flooding. So, you know, this is, sadly, we shouldn't have to continue to talk about this and about a system that should be operational at a council level and functioning after, you know, how long's it been? For fifteen, sixteen months now since that? But it's clear that if this was to happen again tomorrow, sure it won't, hopefully it won't, touch wood, that this city would be scarcely better prepared than we were in February 2022 under the leadership of Adrian Shrinar as Lord Mayor. Not to mention all of the other things that went wrong during that weekend about not having enough staff to close roads, not having enough staff to fill sandbags. You know, when I went to the depot, when enough equipment, when I went to the depot on the super sandbag weekend, I was advised by council staff at the Only Northside Depot producing sandbags, that the machine had broken down, the pin had broken and they couldn't get another one, so we were totally without any capacity other than a shovel and a bag to fill sandbags. I mean, these are the basics that people expect a council to do when it comes to disaster response. They don't expect council to be able to rescue every single person off roofs and things like that, but they certainly expect a council to be able to produce sandbags, to be able to staff road closures on council roads, to support community centres and community evacuation hubs and also warn people. And the Lord Mayor failed on all those things in February 2022 and all his response has been, is paper thin, it's a veneer. And I think, I really worry we'll come unstuck with the Lord Mayor if we had more interest and focus from him on these basic issues rather than, you know, going to those long lunches and awarding, award, you know, it's good if you can get it, isn't it? Yes, complaining about all these catered affairs that he goes to and how bad it is that he has to declare all those things and how bad the state government is in making him do that. If he didn't, if he spent less time complaining about that and more time actually focusing on his job, we would have a safer environment for people to call home here in Brisbane. But, you know, shame on him, shame on him for going out there and blaming other levels of government at every stage. We heard it earlier today about housing, we heard it last year about the early warning system. But the facts are that the Lord Mayor didn't require, didn't request a message until late Sunday night and that's when those started to be delivered. So the blame, again, when you follow all the dots, is sheeted home to this Lord Mayor. Shame on him.
Further debate in general business? No further general business, I declare the meeting closed.